You ready, Matthew?
One second.
Recording in progress.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Welcome to Albany City Council meeting work session, uh, Mart- Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 4:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and your roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Olson?
Here.
Counselor Novak?
Counselor Novak has let me know that she's going to try to join by telephone.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Here.
Counselor Kupcinski?
Here.
And Mayor Johnson II?
I'm here. Thank you. Uh, we do have a couple of folks. Thank you very much for that, Mary. I'm trying to find the email. There it is right there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Could I get the clerk to call Counselor Novak again? I think she's joined.
Okay.
Counselor Novak?
I see her number, but it's looks like it's muted.
Okay, I'll go ahead and show that she is on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so welcome to the end to the Albany City Council work session today. Uh, right now, business from the public, persons wanting to comment and or provide written materials, for the record must register to speak and and attach some materials to the email address provided in the agenda before noon of the day of the meeting. We did have some materials submitted. Uh, we also have one person or two people signed up to speak. Uh, George and Basili and George Facilli and Paula Rosaskis, Rosakis of Diamond Portland, have reached to speak with us about Edgewater this evening. So if and also we had an information sent in uh, by Veritone on the Albany Helping Hands. And so the first up will be uh, three minutes for the Edgewater property discussion.
George, are you on?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so this is George and we actually made it to our computer this time. So hopefully you can see me. Um, yeah, we appreciate you guys taking uh, the time last time to look at what we did or, you know, or kind of a recap. You know what we really want to talk about tonight is just letting you know that um, you know, we're interested in that property uh, next to us when you make it surplus. We like, you know, since we did such a large investment and spent so many years there, um, we want to finish what we started. And I want to make sure it's comp- it complements what we've done and enhances that location. And so primarily, we just want you to know that when you do put it on surplus property, we're interested in buying it. And um, and hopefully it's a price where we can afford to, you know, purchase it and and because cost of construction has gone up. Well, you guys know all that inflation is happening. It's just a lot of things are happening again. So that and it'll probably take a year to get this going to get approvals, assuming once you're ready to uh, do something with that property. Um, so anyway, that's what that's reason. We just wanted to talk to you and let you know that we're we're here.
Well, thank, thank you very much for that. Um, I will have the council speak, respond during business from the council. So I greatly appreciate if you can hang on for a few minutes and maybe answer questions during business from the council. I greatly appreciate it. Um, next up is Veritone. Are they here today? Okay, Matthew, go ahead, please. Director Rutgers.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, you know, Veritone has sent some uh, information over. I think it, I think it's just information at this point uh, that kind of ties in with uh, one of the items that I'll be bringing later. Okay. I I don't think they anticipated to uh, speak tonight.
Okay, thank you, Brad. And Counselor, did you receive the information via email? You did? Okay, so we'll speak on that one, Matt. The Director Rutgers gets back to us. Um, so that's it from business from the public. And uh, the next up is the utility rate adjustments fiscal year 2022, 2023. Director Bailey uh, signed up to speak on this uh, on your your docket pages of 20, so two numbers, page two to thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody hear me? Yes, okay. Okay, you should be seeing the introductory slide for the PowerPoint. So um, thank you, Mayor. Um, this afternoon's presentation is our annual Public Works Utility Rate Presentation. We bring this to council every year and review the funding for the three water utilities and discuss forecasted rate changes for the next fiscal year and then look out five years. Um, I'm gonna try to go pretty quickly because I'm supposed to be um, thirty minutes and that'll be a land speed record if we can get it done. So, but please stop me if you have questions. Um. So there'll be three sections of this presentation and we'll start off with um, where the rate money goes. So we've talked about this a few times with the council, but and just as a refresher, the discussion of rates is actually the end product of uh, multiple discussions with the city council and your direction to us. So the council establishes the level of service that they want to achieve in each utility and then staff goes off and does the research and work to try to define a rate structure that accomplishes um, that level of service. When the funding is not adequate to maintain the desired level of service, then we come back to the council and discuss um, the best path forward. So today's recommendation is is our presentation to you of what we think we need to, in order to continue to accomplish the service that you've asked us to provide. In the water utilities, the revenue goes to one of three categories. Um, our first obligation is to pay for debts. Then we allocate funding for O and M and then uh, with whatever's left over, we put towards capital investment. So talk about debt. We have three sources of debt in the water utilities right now. In the water fund, we have um, an existing loan that was taken out. Actually, I think it might have been a bond that was taken out in order to construct the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant. Um, the annual payment for that is 1.92 million dollars and it will end in 2034. In the sewer fund, we have two um, loans. First was a, the largest loan that was taken out to fund the construction of the water reclamation facility in Talking Water Gardens. We refinanced this loan a few years ago and um, to take advantage of better rates. And our current annual payment is about 4.7 million dollars and it will be paid off in 2032. The final debt obligation we have is another uh, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan that we recently took out. This was uh, paid for the improvements on the waterfront interceptor and the new wet weather lift station enforcement on Water Avenue. That payment amount is $650,000 a year and will be paid off in 2041. So after we've allocated money for our debt payment, then we consider our obligations and operations and maintenance. O and M includes personnel, materials and regulatory requirements, among other things. Um, I'm going to talk about each of the utilities individually, but we want to maintain our investment in the O and M of the systems in order to avoid emergency repairs, failures or regulatory issues. So I'll talk about the sanitary sewer system. Um, all of the wastewater generated by residential, industrial and commercial customers travels down through a network of pipes to the water reclamation facility. That's the single point of treatment for all of our wastewater. But in addition to that, we have thousands and thousands of pieces of individual sewer infrastructure that have to be maintained. Last fiscal year, the WRF treated over 3 billion gallons of wastewater and before returning clean water to the river. Uh, we've logged 60,000 visitors at the wetlands. We also um, do quite a bit of work in the collection system in terms of cleaning and inspecting our pipes, responding to customer service requests, et cetera. Here are a few pictures for you. Um, a couple of pictures of the, some of the treatment plant facilities, one shot of the wetlands and then the bottom right-hand corner is actually a uh, sewer overflow from a broken force main. So these are the types of things that we try to avoid, but they do happen. And I wanted to show you a picture of one. Um, this ended up involving um, our environmental services, wastewater collection, engineers, inspectors, and then ultimately a contractor to resolve that. Um, so those things do happen. Onto the water system. Again, we have thousands of pieces of infrastructure. Each one of these is tracked in our asset management system. Um, we're fortunate to have two drinking water plants, which is unusual for a city of our size. Um, and then we also have the canal dam and all of that associated infrastructure, which is also pretty unusual. Last year, um, on the canal, we did brush removal and inspections all along the length of the canal, both sides. Um, we generated a little bit of power at the hydro facility. And then at the treatment plants, but combined with the the two treatment plants, we made almost 3 billion gallons of water. And we did a number of um, in-house tests and analyses to keep those things going. In the distribution system, we do all of this work. I'm not going to read all of this, but every day there's hundreds of uh, things that are getting done uh, from repairing and replacing meters and service lines, um, doing leak detection. We exercise all of the valves in the system. We manage the backflow devices, et cetera, et cetera. Lots of work. A few exciting photos for you. Um, this uh, bank failure on the canal on the left actually occurred the winter before last and was repaired last year. So that will be looking a whole lot better. I'll try to get a picture of that. And then some, just some other typical work. We don't normally have geysers when cars hit hydrants, but that one broke off the hydrant below the cuff and it created a very exciting scene. And last but not least, the stormwater system. So again, um, when you add up the pipe and catch and ditch portions of the stormwater system, we have almost 200 miles of conveyance that we have to maintain and then thousands of other pieces of infrastructure. There's no treatment facility for stormwater. Um, essentially what goes down the drain goes out to the river. So that's how we try to focus on pollution prevention in the stormwater system. Um, and we also are increasing our inventory of water quality facilities up to about 350 now, each of which has to be inspected and maintained. Last fiscal year, um, we continued our work to inspect and um, clean this piped infrastructure in the stormwater system, which we've been doing for about five years now. We're 85% of the way through the system. Uh, we did some emergency repairs. We don't have capital funding in stormwater to do planned capital repairs. So any repair you see in stormwater is an emergency. Um, which is not exactly the best position to be in, but that's where we are right now. We also have to respond to and manage illicit discharges. Those are spills, dumping, um, whether they're accidental or intentional, we have to investigate those and resolve those to protect the waters of the state. And then finally, street sweeping. We count street sweeping with stormwater management because although street sweeping definitely has a pedestrian and traffic safety component, um, it also protects the waters by removing those pollutants before they can be discharged down the drain. More pictures for you. Um, large spill on the Ellsworth Street Bridge that had to be cleaned up and then put down the absorbent and then swept that all up and disposed of it properly. Of course, we have a lot of debris in our pipe systems that we try to clean out every year. And then the bottom right picture is some new significant stormwater infrastructure that was built in South Albany. So that's the review of O and M work. Now we're going to move on to the capital spending, which is our third and final um, bucket of expenditures that we make in the water utilities. About 10 years ago, we discussed with the council appropriate capital funding targets for water and sewer. It was the first time that we had established firm targets that we tried to meet every year in order to have adequate funds to make these investments in our systems. Uh, in the last couple of years, we did this with stormwater, but the stormwater uh, investment is only to replace the street fund portion um, that they pay for the stormwater part of street projects. So um, the stormwater capital uh, funding that is included in the rate is only there to relieve some pressure from the street fund. The other two funds, we have much higher capital targets and we do a lot more proactive work and in the systems with the that funding. So in sewer, um, before we developed this annual funding target, we had regular failures in the sewer system that would create sinkholes, service disconnections, um, all kinds of problems. Those have virtually been eliminated through our asset management program with what you would call perpetual life replacement. Um, so the what we do is we take our top 50 list of bad pipes in in priority order and we um, attack those every year. We put funding towards them and try to fix them um, from worst to best. So we've done, made quite a bit of improvement, although we still have about 24 miles of pipe in the sewer system that's rated four or five and um, five is the worst rating that you can get in the system. Uh, it goes from one to five and five means that it, the pipe is considered failed or likely to fail in less than five years. So we have 24 miles of pipe that we still need to really work on. Um, even though the slide says that we are achieving our desired level of service, I want to take a second and talk about what goes on behind the scenes a little bit. So a year before last, we were trying to allocate our capital, capital funds and we made a calculated risk. We took a calculated risk to not fund the perpetual life replacement program in this current fiscal year. Instead, we programmed that money over to the Cox Creek project because we didn't know we were going to get ARPA funds and we needed to get that Cox Creek project done. So we did that. And the risk is that if we're not replacing those pipes, they're going to fail. Well, two of them failed. So even though we knew that that might happen, we felt it was important enough to take our pipe replacement money and put it to the Cox Creek pro- project because that project has got to get done. And we just weren't, weren't going to get there if we didn't make a big move. So we did emergency repairs on the two sections of pipe that failed. And luckily, now we have the ARPA funding, so we can fully fund our pipe replacement program again. But I want you to know that even though we say we have adequate funding and we do have adequate funding, that staff are making these kinds of decisions. There's adequate funding, but there's never really enough funding. We have so many needs that we're constantly prioritizing and juggling to try to attack the biggest problem that we see in front of us, you know, at that time. So this is a pie chart. Uh, we've seen over the years, the two slices up here. Um, this is a dark orange and this is a light orange for uh, Counselor Olson. These are the fours and fives. And over time, this big section has gotten bigger, which is what we want. And these two have gotten smaller. Um, and that's a result of targeted and sustained investment. This is another way of looking at that investment in the sewer system. This is 2013 over here on the left. At that time, we had about 90, almost 90,000 linear feet of failed pipe. These are pipes that are rated five or above. And now um, on this side in 2021, we have about 40,000 linear feet, so less than half. And then the darker uh, block in front is the cumulative linear feet of uh, pipe that we've replaced. So it's just another way of looking at our investment has resulted in over 40,000 feet of new pipe, which has brought down our failed pipe number by half. And so that's the kind of thing that we want to keep up and in doing in all of the utilities. One other capital investment I want to highlight in the sewer fund is the um, new composting facility. Council is well aware of this project. Um, but this will take our wastewater solids and through an EPA approved process will create a compost product um, that we can put our solids back to beneficial use for the environment and for the community. So this project has been years in the making. Um, it's very close to being complete and we'll have more information as we get closer, but I just wanted to highlight that as the result of a lot, another significant investment that the, the city and the ca- and the council has made. In the water system, um, we also are attacking our projects that are on the highest need on our list. This picture is actually the Clearwell under the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant, which you, I'm sure none of you have ever been in. I've never been in. I don't want to go into it. Um, but it was drained and waterproofed. And so um, it looks sort of like a, an old catacomb. Um, it's pretty cool. That's one of the important projects we got done to try to sustain and uh, continue our use of the Vine Street Plant, which will, will need for imperperity. Um, we use this capital target to uh, do projects like that. We also do uh, pipe replacement projects. Again, similar to sewer, we have an assessment system and we try to attack our biggest uh, priority pipes in the system and get, get those replaced. We also have um, created a reserve for the membrane replacement at the AM Water Plant. In stormwater, um, again, we do not budget any funds for capital pipe replacement projects. Emergency repairs are taken out of our O and M funds and taken off of our contingencies um, that we have in in that fund to pay for those emergency repairs. We have completed the master plan and we um, are getting close to the end of our funding target. I'll talk about in a few minutes. So in the next year or so, we will be talking with the council about some ne- needed investments in the stormwater system in terms of capital projects. Uh, as I said, our big work in stormwater is continuing to be assessing the system. We've assessed 85% of the pipe system, which is about 120 miles. Uh, we've assigned those pipes a condition rating similar to the sanitary where a one is great and five is bad. So far, we have over 15 miles of pipe that are classified as failed or likely to fail, which would calculate out to about $34 million of a needed investment in that system that we don't have right now. It's important to note that stormpipes are quite different from sanitary sewer pipes. They're larger. They have a lot more openings into the system through all of the curb cuts and and catch basins and inlets. Um, and they have not been regularly ma- maintained because we've never had money to maintain them um, until 2017. So I say all that to tell you that the worst stormwater pipe is way worse than the worst sanitary sewer pipe. So once we do get um, done with this uh, funding ramp to try to implement the permit, we're going to have to address the capital needs in the stormwater system and they're not going to be insignificant. So just preparing you for tough discussions to come later on. A similar pie chart, you, the blue section's not quite as big as the sanitary sewer. Um, and over here are the fours and fives that we need to uh, replace and we still have 15% of the system to go. Again, this is just reiterating that we don't really have capital money to invest in stormwater. Um, but we do have this $450,000 a year that will pay for the storm portion of street projects, which will be helpful to the street fund. Okay, so that is how we spend the money in very short order. Um, next we're going to look at, are we on track for these capital targets? Um, every year we look at our three funds as compared to our revenue expenditure targets and we analyze where we are and what, if any, rate increase we would need to keep on target for our um, annual revenue targets. So there are three major reasons. Inflation, that we would consider rate adjustment. Inflation is um, an obvious one. It affects both operating and capital costs. Um, second, regulatory compliance. We're currently in the middle of uh, doing the work to renew our wastewater permit, which is going to cost us thousands and thousands of dollars to get done. Um, and then capital projects, as those costs increase, we start getting, you know, less feet per dollar done in each system. So we occasionally need to adjust those targets. For next year, our rate recommendation is a 2% increase in sewer and a 2% increase in water. Both of those are simply to keep pace with inflation. Even though the CPI was over 8%, um, our revenue came in slightly higher than expected. So we think 2% will be adequate for us to stay on target with water and sewer. Stormwater is 17% and I give my standard warning that 17 is a large percentage, but we're starting from a very small dollar amount in the stormwater fund. So each percent of stormwater represents less actual dollars than water or sewer. The 17% increase that also responds to inflation, but it's more related to the funding need for permitting requirements and that street capital um, reserve that we're building. Okay, these tables are um, based on single-family residential customers who use eight units of water a month or 800 cubic feet. Eight units of water a month is actually more than our average residential customers use in Albany, but it's the standard that the state uses. So we use that to, in order to compare ourselves with other jurisdictions. So each of these tables shows the current rate and the recommended increased amount per day and per month for sewer, water and stormwater. So for example, current rate for sewer is um, with an eight unit per month. Residential customer would be $64.95 and that would go up to 66.25. And then you can see down the remainder of the table. Um, for combining all three water utilities, the current rate for eight units a month would be $133.17. If these rate increases are implemented, that would go up to 137.66, um, which is a weighted average increase of, or a weighted percent increase of 3.4%. The other thing I'd like to remind everyone of is that this assumes that all three of these rate increases are in place, but remember that they go into effect at different times. So the sewer rate increase, if it were approved, would go into effect July 1st of this year. The water, drinking water increase would go into effect January 1st of 2023 and stormwater would be um, March 1st of 2023. But we present them all at one time because that's how the council asked us to do it a few years ago. So that's why we do it. Uh-oh. There we go. Um, this is a new slide I added because in the pre- in the past, the council has asked us to talk about the total impact to our citizens. So this year is new. We have the city services fee. So I added the $9 um, for the typical residential customer onto this. So it's the same as the previous slide, just as the $9 per month for the city services fee. And I will say that Public Works gets no money from the city services fee. So just in case there's confusion, um, it doesn't come to the water funds at all and there uh, is no planned increase in the city services fee for next fiscal year. Okay, this table is our comparison table. Might look familiar to you all. Um, typically Albany has been about number nine on this table. We've jumped up to number six. We're right in the middle of our nearby cities. Um, and this table represents again, all three, if all three of these increases went into effect, this would be the total monthly utility bill for Albany, including the city services fee. And it's compared to all of these other cities and all of their utility fees from their cities. But if any of these cities raises any of their rates in the next fiscal year, that obviously isn't accounted for here in this table because we don't know what these people are doing. Last table for you. Um, this is the non-single-family residential customers and um, this is very hard to to try to, it's really hard to tell you what industrial and commercial accounts are going to look like because they're all different. Whereas with residential, we can sort of paint with a broad brush. The other accounts are very difficult to do that with. So this is a select um, number of actual customers from the city that we have made anonymous here and we show if these rates go into effect, what they would pay in the Albany column and then we compare them with what they would pay in these other cities. And what I'll say about this is how a city um, spreads the cost of its utilities across all of its classes of customers is very individualized. Cities choose to do this in different ways. Some wait the rates that they charge residential more, some wait the rates that they charge commercial or industrial more, and it just varies all across the board. So that's why you can have an industry in Albany pay 19,000 that would pay $37,000 a month in Eugene. Um, whereas you have, um, I don't know, um, City Hall pays $846 in Albany, but would only pay 591 in Salem. It's just a matter of how the rate structure is created for all of these different classes of customers. It's not, there's no right or wrong way. It's just how each city has chosen to. It's not, there's no right or wrong way. It's just how each city has chosen to develop that. Okay, last section is five-year for rate, five-year rate forecast. Try to go fast. In Public Works, we maintain a five-year rate forecast for all of our utilities all of the time. We use this to plan our work and also to make sure we're not surprised and need a significant rate increase. There's lots of variables, so it's an educated guess, as you all know. Come on. There's something wrong with my clicker. There we go. In the sewer fund, this is a five-year look back at rate revenue. It's climbed steadily in response to rate increases over the past few years. S D C revenue bounces all around, as you can imagine. S D C revenue depends on the rate and type of development that comes in. It's been up and down. And now I want to talk about this chart. So those of you that have been on the council have seen this chart before. And this is trying to explain the relationship between S D C revenue and debt service payments in the sewer fund only. So I'll talk, talk my way through this. The dotted line at the top is our total debt service payment for the year, which in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is about four point seven million dollars. This dot dash line is the amount that rates will actually pay towards that debt service. The dash line is what S D C revenue is supposed to pay toward the debt service. And the solid line is what S D C revenue actually will be paying toward the debt service. So there's a gap. We're not collecting S D C revenue enough to pay for its fair share of debt. So next year, the gap is about five hundred thousand dollars. We can't not pay that five hundred thousand dollars on our debt payment, so rates has to pick that up. So we've talked about this for years. Over time, the S D C revenue in sewer has not been able to keep up with the amount that it was assigned in the debt that was taken out for the W R F. When we took out the debt for the W R F, we broke the payment up into a portion that was be paid by rates and a portion that would be paid by S D Cs based on the percent of the project that was due to current needs and future needs. So S D C is supposed to pay for the future need of the treatment plan. What this chart is telling you is that rates are going to be need to be raised more than they would need to be otherwise in order to pay the portion of debt that S D C revenue is not available to pay. So essentially, the more that rates have to pick up of the S D C portion of the debt, the higher that rates will have to go. Any questions about this specifically? Because it's kind of a it's kind of a tough one.
Also, thank you, Director. Counselor, any questions? I see Counselor Johnson first.
Chris, what would we have to like raise the S D Cs to come at least even, do you think?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question, but we are looking at that right now. And we'll be coming back to talk to the council about sewer S D Cs and
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Are you going to bring this back? Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Are you bringing this back to us on Wednesday for some kind of action or at least?
No, no, Mayor. And I have a couple more slides. I just wanted to pause here because this is complicated. So I just have a couple more slides, but this will be coming back. We adopt the new rates when we adopt the supplemental budget and the other things for next fiscal year. So I think that'll be in May or June.
So is, thank you for that. Is this going to be adjusted for what we got, we have going on with inflation right now?
It includes the adjustments for inflation. And the reason our inflationary adjustments are low compared to C P I and other inflationary measures is because our revenue has actually come in higher than anticipated. So we don't need to raise rates as much. Let me just run through this last couple of slides. So sewer rate forecast, we had predicted we would need to be at three and a half percent. Again, because our revenue is higher, we're down at two percent for next year's our recommendation. And then we're forecasting out a little bit higher, assuming that inflation stays kind of higher than normal and we'll need to make up that difference. Water rate revenues, again, they've been climbing in response to past rate increases. S D C revenue also bounces around, but not quite as crazy as the sewer S D C revenue. And similar to sewer, we had thought we would need to be at three and a half percent this year, but we're recommending two percent because of our revenues have been better than expected. Stormwater, it's been climbing fairly steeply. Again, we've had a series of seventeen percent rate increases. And that has to do with this chart, which was from the June twenty-eighteen council meeting. I'm sure everyone remembers it as well as I do, where the council helped us set a goal of one point four million dollars above twenty-eighteen revenues. And in order to achieve that, we needed to be on this line of seventeen percent rate increases. So we're here in year four, will be fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And then we have one more year of seventeen percent. We should reach our target amount. We're on track to do that. So we show twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then we'll come back to the council and discuss a different target for the stormwater fund because we won't need, we don't think we'll need that same amount to meet our permit obligations at that point. Okay, last slide. So what we're recommending is two percent July first for sewer, two percent January first for water and seventeen percent next March for stormwater, which works out to an average residential bill increase of three point four percent or about, I think it was about four dollars and fifty cents a month. Now I'm done, Mayor. Sorry.
Thank you. I see. Thank you very much, Director Bailey. I see Counselor Smith has a question.
Just a comment, the increase in the stormwater fee would not cover that thirty-four million dollars worth of pipe replacement. Is that correct?
No, zero dollars of the stormwater fee increasement are going towards the thirty-four million dollars needed for the pipe replacement.
Thank you.
So Counselor Karpczynski, thank you, Counselor Smith.
Director Bailey, I think that, you know, over time, I've been through this process several, several times now. I think it's been very well thought out. And if we can stay the course, we can start unburdening ourselves from some of these things simply because we've had the backbone to say these are necessary. Because if we don't do these, they're going to get just absolutely worse. And we don't know what some of the intangibles are coming down the pike at us, which are going to magnify some of these things anyway. So all we can do is try and stay just nominally ahead of the eight ball. But I think you and the team are doing a wonderful job with the limited tools that you have at your disposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the, you know, the, thank you, Counselor Karpczynski. Any other counselors? Counselor Novak, do you have anything? She's on her phone, so I'm giving her a little more time to respond. So I didn't have nothing from her. I just want to comment that, you know, listening to that four or five sewer pipes, twenty-four miles, that's a concern. It should be a concern for everyone. When I first was elected to city council in twenty-nineteen, it was nineteen miles of four or five sewer pipe and the grafted that we saw at that time. Now that's gone up and I'm sure that's due to delaying things and not, not having the revenue to get those fixed, those things fixed. But I want people to keep in mind that when we do the four or five sewer pipe, it's also important that our public works and streets folks look at, before they rip up a road, check the pipes before they put it back down because we don't want to not do the pipe inspections and then put a road on top of it, which is going to lead to a failure later on down the road, causing us to be creating greater debt. So I do appreciate the work you guys do. And I want to thank you and I want to thank Kristen Preston on there. See, you're on here. A few months back, I reported a spill or somebody illegally dumped some oil or waste oil. And her, she was her response and Chris, Dr. Director Bailey's response was amazing. They had cleaned up within a few days. So I do want to thank you for that and your response in handling that, that particular incident.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I think, are you, are you done, Director? Any other council questions?
I am.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation today. Next on the agenda is Oregon ballot measure one-ten overview by Officer Jerry Drum. It was informational only. So there, Jerry, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. All right, can everybody see my screen?
You're not in PowerPoint mode or presentation mode. You are in your, we see your notes.
You do. Okay. I'm not sure.
No, 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 no. Go under there. There you go. You're right there.
There you go.
Presentation. There you go.
That it?
Yep.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm just going to give you a quick rundown of what we're working through as from a criminal justice standpoint of Oregon ballot measure one-ten that we've been experiencing. So ballot measure one-ten, for those, just as a reminder, it took effect on February twenty-first, two thousand one. It essentially is the referred to drug users no longer as drug users. They were to be referred to as addicts and they now suffer from what is called a substance use disorder, which the state of Oregon has recognized as being a disease. And what that, what that did is, and for measure one-ten, it was actually the Recovery Act or a looking at getting people into rehab. And but what it did is a decriminalized possession of user amounts of methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, fentanyl, L S D and illicit pills, which I'm going to get into in a little bit, a little bit more about illicit pills. So ballot measure one-ten basically took, when it decriminalized, it made them a violation. And it developed what we call a classy violation, which essentially gave the users a one hundred dollar fine for getting, for being in possession of those drugs. Initially, when they set this up, they set it up as a phone-in type assessment center. It's just a temporary where you called a number and you talked to a counselor or somebody on the other line that talked about these things. By October twenty-first, the ballot major one-ten said, hey, all your assessment centers, there has to be brick and mortar buildings that are open and ready to go. And because of COVID, that just kept getting delayed, 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 and they're still not even open. But if you, as you can imagine, they offered in two thousand nineteen through twenty-one, sixty-one million dollars of marijuana money was diverted to this. So you can imagine the huge response that all these people were going to try and open these assessment centers to try and take advantage of all the marijuana money. And just, just out of perspective, from two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three, they reallocated one hundred eighty-two million dollars into ballot measure one-ten assessment centers to be open. And they're saying that they want one in every county. And we do have one that has actually applied for one of these grants to get that in Lynn County. And it is called community, Crossroads Communities in Lebanon. And they're allocated to be about two hundred forty-three thousand dollars is what they've, they've asked for. The letters were supposed to go out to those, letting them know that they were given those grants on March fourth. I tried to look up on their site as to who got those awards. They haven't listed any of that yet. But essentially, if somebody goes into one of these centers or they make that phone call, they have, that fine can be waived if they go back into the court within forty-five days of their site date. And they say, hey, I did this assessment. And the court says, okay, we'll waive the fine. What's interesting about this is there is absolutely no penalties whatsoever for somebody to, if they don't want to show up to court or they don't pay this fine, there's absolutely nothing the courts can do. There's no punitive damages, no punitive anything that can be, that can't be held accountable for that money. It just basically goes away. So essentially, I was a little bit a part of this. We've been looking at ways, how do we, how do we combat this? Because there, we were seeing in the criminal justice system, just a huge amount of downfall of people's mental health. And we know that drugs affect people's mental health. We know that. And we just were seeing a huge increase in the mental health type calls we're going to. And so we started looking at this, how, what can we do to try and fix this? So July first, Senate Bill seventy-five actually repealed some of that and gave us a misdemeanor possession charge back and lowered those amounts for the violation a little bit. So it's actually a benefit. And one thing it did too is there was no record in any municipal courts or justice courts in the county that were keeping record of how many people were being cited for this. So they said, let's put this into circuit court, which is considered a court of record, municipal courts or not. And so that's kind of what the bill did to kind of keep track of where we're, where we're heading with this and what we're doing. So they determined that they needed an oversight council and the oversight council consists of nine members. It originally was supposed to be nine members. It's now up to twenty-two, but it includes physicians, clinical social workers, academic researchers. What I thought was interesting, and I put it in here, is that at least two people on this oversight council have to be suffering from substance use disorder or have suffered from substance use disorder. So if you can imagine, somebody that is still a drug user is kind of being held, being responsible for one hundred eighty-two million dollars and how that gets, goes around. So I thought that was interesting. Marijuana tax dollars again are reallocated. The city of Albany, because of this reallocation, we essentially saw a reduction, two hundred thousand dollars for, and that's what we'll see annually as a result of this. That's it. It goes back into that fund to then just get reallocated, not back to the city. And eight hundred thousand dollars is what we're losing countywide as a result of this. Just to give you what the, the mission statement of the oversight council is to provide access to health, mental health and addiction services and support, meeting the needs of adults and children to live, be educated, work, take part in their communities, working with individuals and their families and other estate agencies, providers, advocates and communities. They're really looking to get people help, which is a good thing. But just to give you a rough idea for our city and county, some of our numbers, from February twenty-first to January twenty-second, we sent the Albany Police Department sent ninety-three citations to Albany Municipal Court and forty-eight citations were sent to the Lynn County Circuit Court. And you can see how many people there showed up to court. Zero. We had zero showed up in court, zero paid the fine, zero people called into that phone number to get an assessment. So and then, so I just bring up, bring up some statewide statistics through the, for the same time, kind of roughly the same timeframe. Eighteen hundred twenty-six citations were done city statewide. And I will go through all these numbers. You guys can read them. But what's interesting is that only fifty-five people statewide have called that phone number to get help. And so one hundred forty-three people have sided multiple times. So those are those repeat offenders that just getting cited and cited and cited. And one hundred twenty-three people that didn't live here got cited for it. And right there, you got the bottom, sixty-seven percent were for methamphetamine. So it kind of gives you a rough idea where are really our big problem wise. And twenty-one percent was for heroin, twelve percent for cocaine and pills. And we are seeing a little bit of a spike in cocaine, which is interesting. We haven't seen that for quite a few years. We're seeing that come back a little bit in, in our area. Here's the, the number they can call and this is just, this is what we hand out. By the statute, we're required, if we cite somebody, we're required to give this, give them this information that lets them know what their rights are and how to get help for their substance abuse disorder. And it tells them right here, they can avoid the hundred dollar fine just by calling that number. But I, you know, they don't want to call the number. They just decide not to show up to court. This is what I really want to talk about because I think this is where we're really seeing a huge impact in, in our community is measure one-ten said that you can possess forty-two of these little blue pills or these green Xanax bars. What we've seen as a result of this is a huge influx from other countries that these pills are not real. And since, since we've seen these pills coming in, Since since we've uh seen these pills coming in, all these pills are containing fentanyl. And there's some statistics from DEA down there that. We've had one point five million fentanyl-laced pills, fake pills seized and. Out of that one point five million, only one thousand to fifteen hundred of those pills have actually been the real manufactured. Uh oxycodone pills from the actual pharmaceutical company. So the rest of those have all been fake pills coming, coming in and they all contain a drug called fentanyl. Which uh the chief might appreciate this, but uh she was in a class recently that said. Fentanyl is making the occasional user an addict and then making the addict dead. We've had. A huge, huge number of overdoses and I know that, uh and if you just have to think about it just for a minute, you can think about the. How much an overdose affects and how many people it actually affects, just that one overdose can affect up a, up to a thousand family members and friends. And so since that time, we have um. Used Narcan sixty three times on people and and Narcan is a drug that counteracts uh opiate addiction. And will actually save somebody's life, so uh and but prior to measure one ten coming in, we only used Narcan twenty six times. So you can see the impact that we're having and those Narcan uh drugs that we uh give, they're not cheap. Uh they're about thirty bucks a use. Uh but I think it's important that we carry them cuz it's, if we save that one child or we save another police officer's life that could be exposed. I'm willing to spend that money and carry those things on us. Um but I think uh um as I think about it, this, the the huge impact that we've had. Uh of these fake drugs come in because it takes for fentanyl. Uh if you can imagine um a a bag of drugs. One piece of fentanyl, the size smaller than a grain of salt is all it takes to kill a human being. And what, when these pills are manufactured illegally, they just. Uh in the manufacturing process, they grind up uh ibuprofen. And they buy cheap ibuprofen, they grind it up and then they sprinkle in fentanyl into these pills as they're making it, so. There's no, there might be a chance that you get three pieces of fentanyl in one pill and then you might not get any in another pill. So and these users uh and and drug addicts, they know this information. And yet they still continue to uh wanna use these pills. And so we've seen a huge spike in overdose deaths and and uh. I'm afraid until we get a good handle on these pills coming in, we're gonna continue that, but I think as uh. As we uh challenge our officers to to cite more people uh that are in possession of these pills illegally. Uh I think we can make it, we're making uh an impact in our community. And that is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
I just, I'd like to make a quick statement. Thank you very much, Officer Drum. So I asked them, Marcia and Dirk, Mr. Officer Drum to come and do this presentation. Because what, one of my goddaughters was one of those people that received one of those blue pills. And she's no longer with us. We have a problem within our midst, the whole state, the whole country. And we need to do whatever we can as a council to help the chief of police and her department to deal with this issue. And uh with that, I'll go ahead and take comments from the council, so thank you very much, Officer Drum.
You're welcome, thank you.
Captain Drum, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Counsel, do you have anything? I see Counsel Johnson first, please.
Yeah, I was just wondering, uh Chief and Captain, I just. Why do you think it is that uh laws are being? Lessened rather than strengthened because, you know. If there's no consequences. You know, they're not, they're not gonna quit, they're not gonna show up or whatever, but is there any reasoning? Behind this? I mean, it makes me sick when I, when I see that, you know, you can have. More now than you could before, well, do they think it's just gonna help? I I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either. I think uh, you know, unfortunately with measure one ten, it. Uh got submitted and there was a lot of money behind it uh to advertise for it as being uh something for people. Drug addiction and recovery uh type bill and. Uh if si- if somebody would have really sat down and read what is in there, it had really, at the initial onset of it, had nothing to do with recovery and had nothing to do. Uh with any of that, it was just all about lowering, making it a violation is all it's really about. It didn't have any of the provisions set up to, for the phone number for anybody to call. In fact, that number didn't get set up for a number of months, that nobody, nobody knew what the number was. Uh and I think with the national election going on, it's just one of those things that just. Everybody was worried about the national elections and this just in through without really giving a lot of thought into it. And and now we're having to uh, you know, really work at uh making, making it so that we keep our kids safe. Cuz that's the worst part, I think, is these kids getting hold these pills.
Most definitely, I mean, I, and I don't, I had, I had heard on the news or read it somewhere where um. These kids are ordering these things, you know, without their parents knowing and they get them and and just like you said, one. Thought of it can kill them and then. So somehow we've gotta make it totally illegal rather than lessening the charges. Thank you, I'm, I don't know, Chief, if you have anything to say.
Chief, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm just gonna tag onto what uh Jerry said, uh nobody doubts the good intent behind uh this measure. But any, even if you're thinking about uh a plan to open a business. You gotta have the infrastructure in place before you can really open your doors. And the frustration, I think, for us in public safety is the law changed and removed any accountability. Whether it be through drug courts or anything like that, removed any accountability before any infrastructure was in place. Uh one of the things that Jerry and I talked about is how many people in Lincoln Benton counties had actually even applied for the grant money. There's about two hundred and fifty million dollars out there, one place in the two counties. To serve about a hundred and fifty thousand people, so. It's a very poorly executed business plan, if you wanna look at it from that perspective, the intent is good, absolutely. Your first time users, second time users should get a shot at trying to get off of the substance. Rather than going to the criminal justice system, but right now, there's just no system in place to do that.
That's a shame. Thank you both very much.
Thank you, Captain Drum. Any other counselors have any comments or questions for the chief or Captain Drum? But thank you very much for your attendance tonight, Captain Drum.
Thank you.
Um next up on the agenda is uh Jefferson Street of Southeast Right Away. Vacation, uh Director Rutgers is gonna speak with us this evening.
Yeah, good evening, counselors and mayor, so I um I'm gonna share my screen real quick. Uh hopefully you can all see that. So uh as I kind of alluded to earlier, uh and the folks over at Helping Hands had sent over some information. Uh so the Helping Hands Albany Shelter is proposing an expansion of their facilities over uh six nineteen ninth. Uh Avenue and that'll require conditional land use application and demonstrated compliance with our development code. One of the challenges that they have with the new addition that you can see kind of boxed out and read here. Is that it will take up some of the existing parking that they had on site, so they'll have to replace that parking um somewhere, which kind of leads to. Uh our, our discussion and why I'm here tonight. Um so directly west of the Helping Hands property, there's an old piece of Jefferson Street right away that's never been developed. Um I can't say that it's unused, it does have underground sewer line uh in there and it's currently being used for access. For these parcels, eight sixteen, eight twenty four, eight thirty four, I believe it is. On the west side of it, um what we're proposing to do tonight, uh well, what I came here to ask. Uh if the council would be interested in would be vacating this unused right away, we would maintain a. Uh utility easements for maintenance of our utilities uh in there. There would also be a requirement that they maintain access for uh any of the properties that that utilize this for access to their sites. Uh Helping Hands actually owns their site at six nineteen as well as two of the properties in the back, so really the only property they don't own is. Eight thirty four up the front and then some of this O dot property in the back, which is all slope for the highway. Uh so here to 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 ask if it's something that council would be willing to entertain initiating a vacation. Uh of this unused right away. As far as budget impacts go, there, there really isn't a budget impact for us, other than it would take some staff's time to pull together the applications. And go through the the vacation process. Uh with that, uh I'm happy to to ha- answer any questions that you might have and just look for some direction if you're interested in uh initiating a vacation.
Thank you. Counselor Smith.
Uh I am strongly in favor of uh initiating the vacation, it's, that's, that's a street to nowhere. And this is um a path to a much needed expansion and improvement at Helping Hands. It's just makes perfect sense to me. Thanks.
I, I counsel, can I get a thumbs up or any more comments? Cuz I'd just like a thumbs up. Uh Counselor Olson, please.
Oh yes, the gray shaded area, looks like it takes up part of three. Actual uh city lots, is that the case or is that all city right away that's shaded in gray?
The the shaded area, and I apologize, you, what the line that you're seeing under there is actually a part of a paved driveway that's in there. It, that's an actual right away that that fronts three city lots on the west side or on the left side over here. Um and it also fronts the Helping Hands uh property, I believe it's a sixty foot right wide right of way. Um so that, that's the piece that would be vacated.
So those three lots are. Defined in the city right away, is that correct?
Uh let me see if this other drawing has a better picture, so here, this, this shows it a little bit better. Uh for you, Counsel Olson, so the gray shaded area would be this piece here, the, the way that the addressing is shown on this other exhibit. Those houses are really set uh closer to the, what would be the back line or east lot line, so it looks like. When it, when you see this existing paving uh underlying the great area, it makes it look like it's part of the lot, which it's not, it's actually part of the right away.
And are there houses on those lots?
There are, let me flip back real quick. So eight sixteen and eight twenty four have, both have houses on it as well as eight thirty four, the. Eight sixteen and eight twenty four, so the, the two lots to the, the most northerly two lots are actually owned by Helping Hands. Uh the lot, eight thirty four, which fronts nine, ninth avenue and. Um uses the Jefferson Street right away as part of their kind of access back to their uh garage, I believe it is. Um that's owned by somebody else.
And did you say there was a house on there?
There is a house on there.
Does that extend into the uh right away?
So there, there are lots or the, the lots themselves or the, the, the uh homes don't extend into the right away. The right, the only thing the right away currently has in it is um some paving for an existing driveway that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other counselors? Um thank you very much, Counsel Olson, for the questions. Uh Counselor Bartholomew, you have any questions?
No, I think uh it's a great idea and uh it's uh time to move forward, thank you.
So Counsel, if you'd like me to bring back, give me a thumbs up, please. Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you, Director Rutgers, for bringing that to us this evening. I'll see you Wednesday evening.
Great. Well, and and you don't get rid of, rid of me back to the agenda. You don't get rid of me that fast, I have the next item with you.
Oh, you're killing me. Okay, so uh Senate Bill fifty five sixty one grant acceptance, uh Director Rutgers is gonna stay with us. On page seventeen and eighteen of your packet.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm moving fairly quick, just so I can kind of keep us on time. I know tonight is a little bit of a longer work session, but. Uh just bringing back, we had had a, a, a discussion back in January about some uh, a grant that was gonna be coming. From the state, uh because we are a C O C D B G community, there was gonna be grants to fourteen C D B G communities. Each get receiving a million dollars. That grant paperwork has now come in, um so really here tonight for two things, one. Uh I've brought a resolution for authorizing uh us to enter into the grant uh to receive the million dollars. Uh and the other piece is just for some direction on how the council would like us to proceed, you know, currently we're. We've been reaching out and assessing some needs, one of the recommendations we, we've provided would be to solicit letters of interest. Uh and with that is not asking for uh people to spend, you know. Hours and hours and hours in crafting thirty long, thirty page long reports of what they would do with it. Is starting with just some letters of interest of, of what they would do with the money and that can be open to anybody who has ideas. And then we would bring those um that list back uh for council to evaluate, similar to what we had done with ARPA funds in the past.
So Director, would they apply for uh through the commit, the planning uh to a development commission or would that be?
That, that would really be uh up to you, we could use the Community Development Commission, uh we don't have to in this case, it's, it's a million dollars. Uh that the, the state would be granting us that um we can use for any of the services, I mean, it's. It's pretty loose the way they wrote the grant language, to be honest with you, it, it's basically any of the services that uh are currently be providing by C D B G. Is kind of a good kind of sideboards to put on the money.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, uh Counselor Kaptinski. You will, you muted, right, Counselor?
Thank you, I can easily see a couple of existing agencies uh trying to apply for funding that are already doing a good job like. Community Services Consortium and or Chance, rather than trying to create a whole new agency out of brand new cloth. Uh something's already working, just to help maintain it and let them do their, do their work that they're already doing.
So we do with Community Development Commission, we do review those applications. Uh and then we decide as a commission, where those money, those funds would be allocated, we have a, a scoring process, the whole nine yards. So I wouldn't, there's no really, really need to bring in the new organization when we already have a commission in place that does that every year. That's my thought. So Counsel, would you like to see them, see uh this come back on Wednesday for uh, for your vote? Can I get a thumbs up?
Well, actually, I'll pause there, we can actually, the, don't have to come back on Wednesday, the resolution's attached tonight and it can be voted on tonight. If that's something the council's interested in doing.
Well, I would personally like to talk with the Community Development Commission and and see with their feedback on it, so.
Okay, great.
Counselor Novak, may Counselor Smith, you had a question?
I was just gonna, I, I was gonna jump the gun and and move to adopt the resolution, but that was before I heard you speak.
Well, I just wanna, I'd like to run it by them before we, we make a motion to go forward with it because. You know, they, they do dedicate a lot of their time to reviewing grant applications. And and does a lot of time also in making sure we're on track, so I, I imagine we could talk about that. Okay. Go ahead, Anne.
Thank you, uh Mayor, I was just gonna say, all the resolution would do is accept the grant. It doesn't have anything to do with allocating the grant money, um we don't have this in your packet for Wednesday. We can bring it forward at another time, but we're just trying to accept the grant so that we can sign the grant and get those papers back to the state. Um I just wanted to clarify that, so the direction from council, we could certainly ask the Community Development Commission. If they are interested in overseeing how these funds are allocated, we thought that you all might be the ones that want to make those final decisions. And or hear um from any potential applicant, so uh we just want your direction on how to go about that.
Well, thanks for that clarification and I appreciate it. So would the council like to make a motion to accept these funds?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to um adopt the resolution on page eighteen. Resolution accepting a million dollar grant from the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services. To address housing insecurity, affordable housing and homelessness in Albany.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. I didn't think so. Motion passes, thank you very much. Um next on the agenda is. Uh thank you very much, uh Director Rutgers and um and Captain, thank you very much for that. It's business from the council, uh and our first on my screen is Counsel Johnson.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Thank you very much, Counsel Kaptinski.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Bartholomew. You're muted.
I'm trying to unmute. Okay. Um, yes, um, we talked a while back about uh, property on Sixth and Vine uh, that uh, that right away. And we said that they couldn't uh, put up a fence. And both that property and the property behind them um, are still occupying the right of way. So, good.
Thank you for that. So Counselor, or is it any city manager?
Well, thanks, Mayor. And Chris Bailey has turned her camera on and she'll be able to talk to comment on uh, but we were on the hook to come back from to you with. It's an enforcement plan. So Chris can give you an update on that.
Yes, um, I, it's scheduled for an upcoming meeting. I think it is scheduled for the March twenty-first work session. I think it'll be on your agenda and we'll be back with a report to describe the full right of way along Vine Street and get your um, direction on what you would like us to do.
Thank you.
Director, thank you. Uh, is that it? Counselor Bartholomew? Perfect. Counselor Olson, you're next up.
Nothing today.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Counselor Smith, oh, you already went, my my camera kind of moved around. Counselor Smith, do you have anything?
Not today.
Thank you. Um, and I'll see Counselor Novak on the call. She might have dropped off. She was having technology issues. Uh, so what I would do is I, so what I all I had was uh, we've got a lot of response, uh, people reaching out for information on the, if I were the mayor contest. Uh, I've visited South Albany High School since our last meeting. And uh, tomorrow I'm going to North Albany Middle School and on Friday we're going, uh, I'm going out to visit with the young, the fourth, fifth graders at Sunrise. And so the outpouring, the outreach has been great for the kids. They're getting involved. I'm getting numerous letters and emails from, and calls from parents. And so I'm pretty excited about the number of people that are getting involved. And so with that, I will then turn over to the city manager with his report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And in keeping with most of you, I'll keep it very brief and just let you know that the the rate uh, slides that uh, some of you are interested in uh, have been mailed to you. It's a six megabyte file, but Allison has forwarded them out to you and they'll be available to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, City Manager. And with that, uh, our next meeting is going to be on Wednesday at seven, six P M. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for joining us this evening and get out and enjoy some of the sunshine while we still have it. And um, have a wonderful evening.
Okay.
Do we have a budget meeting?